In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the New Jersey School Board, uh, sorry, uh, Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the middle school, sorry, at the middle, Linda, do I say middle school?
Yes, oh, no, 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 well.
Attorney?
No, you should, you've changed it.
Yeah.
Yes, we didn't post, well, we did post notice.
Posted notice in the middle school and subsequently changed the location for logistical reasons.
And subsequently changed the meeting to the high school for logistical reasons. A motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, please, all please rise for the pledge. Before we do a roll call, I just want to acknowledge that our board attorney, Jonathan Bush, has joined us for this meeting. Uh, Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Here.
Ms. Bull, Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simarusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherbert?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Uh, Linda, are there any further communications between the sides of the one listed on the agenda and the ones on the addendum, uh, passed out?
Yes, I handed the board a list of additional emails that were received since the publication of the agenda. I also wanted, yeah, I have several announcements and communications. Want to remind the board members of the School Boards Association Annual Workshop in October. I didn't bring the sheet with me, but I believe it's the 27th through 29th in Atlantic City. If anyone is interested in attending, please contact my office. Also, um, the, um, any new, board members who would like to apply for candidacy, the new board member candidate petitions are available either at the County Board of Elections Office in New Brunswick or at the board office in Bartle School. And the, Anna, maybe you know this, the last day for filing, I'm not prepared.
Twenty-seventh.
Is the 27th at 4:00 PM in the County Clerk's Office in New Brunswick. That's where you go. Furthermore, I handed to each of the board members a, um, letter from the state of New Jersey announcing the first Jersey Shore Maker Fest, which will be held on October 17th. They, um, are encouraging, uh, educational institutions to participate for free. It's part science fair, part county fair, part classroom, and part artist workshop. So, um, if, um, if anyone, uh, has any questions about that, they can let me know. I'll try to find more information on that. Also, I, um, believe that everyone received the, yes, okay, never mind. Um, the one, one last thing is a very happy announcement. Uh, a member, a resident, um, sent information to the board, um, announcing that, um, David, I'm sorry, David, Captain David G. Monero, uh, United States Navy, son of Carmen or Pete and Rosemary Bern Monero, has been promoted to Rear Admiral. He is a 1984 graduate of Highland Park High School, a graduate of University of Pennsylvania, Harvard University, War College, and Navy Test Pilot School, and received his Navy Pilot Wings in 1991. Served a tour of duty in Desert Storm, flying a helicopter, did a two-year tour in Germany, was military attache to the U.S. Embassy in Russia for two years, and at the present time, he is in the Pentagon. Um, but, um, we felt that congratulations was in order to Mr. Monero.
Quite a distinguished record. And are there any other further communications?
That's all.
Uh, I don't.
He graduated here behind me.
Nice.
It makes me think, we don't have like a distinguished alumni Hall of Fame or something like that, do we? We should start something like that. Like, we have that in my, the high school I graduated from, we have that, and my brother was abducted a couple of years ago. It's totally fun, like, and it's such, I think it's a really inspirational thing for the kids to see. I mean, there's got to be some wall space somewhere in the high school where we can, you know, and then it's just a fabulous ceremony to have once a year.
So, in Edison, they run it as a fundraiser.
Yeah.
It's in the Ed Foundation's doctrine to create the, to run the Alumni Association.
Wait, what?
No, 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 no. No, we'll talk about it later. Um, yeah, Jer, we'll, we'll put you front and center.
I'll be in charge.
Yeah, yeah. Um, fundraising, good idea. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, uh, from 15th, 16th, 22nd of June, 6th, and 7th of July?
So moved.
Second.
Linda, roll, are there any comments? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Uh, yes, but abstained from July 7th.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherbert?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Superintendent Superintendent's report.
Yes, you may. Uh, let me begin by informing you in terms of our enrollment for the month of June. In May, uh, we had 1,584 students. At the end of June, uh, we had 1,569, a loss of 21 students in all. In addition to that, I would like to report on our CUSAC results. As you may remember, back in October, we presented and submitted to this board a statement of assurance regarding CUSAC, and we also discussed the process involved, um, in the CUSAC, uh, initiative. We recently received the CUSAC report, and I'm happy to share these results to you. But before I share the results, let me begin by providing you with a brief synopsis of the process. All right, so, the purpose of CUSAC is to evaluate the thoroughness and the efficiency of New Jersey schools, uh, districts. This district organized a committee that consisted of administrators, teachers, guidance counselors, and secretaries. Uh, once we established the committee, as a matter of fact, William Schlala was the one who was leading the, the committee. Uh, we completed a district performance review, the DPR, as you may remember, and we had to self-evaluate in five particular areas: instruction and programming, fiscal management, operations, governance, and personnel. When we concluded that self-evaluation, upon that completion, we submitted our evaluation to county super, uh, representatives. Uh, they received our DPRs, and then they, uh, conducted a county assessment, which included a visit to the district, uh, walkthroughs regarding our facilities compliance. Uh, there were a couple of things that were highlighted, and those areas that they highlighted have already been addressed. Following, uh, the superintendent and the team, myself and several team members, we presented to the Middlesex County evaluators, and they took a thorough review of all of our presentations, what we had, um, and they conducted visits to each and every school. It's taken some time to receive the results, but, um, I'm happy to share them at this time. We have the results. So, in the five, uh, particular areas that we were looking at, we self-evaluated ourselves in, uh, instruction and program, 83, the county scored us with 80. One of the areas that they highlighted was that the district failed to share with the board and the, uh, community the results of last year's, uh, state tests when they arrived. Um, in terms of fiscal management, we scored ourselves 100, and they scored a 100, governance, operations, and personnel, all 100s. Upon completion of the review, review process, the district did receive a letter from the Assistant Commissioner stating that we have been designated as a high-performing district. So, CUSAC results are in, the process has been concluded, and, uh, this process is to be conducted every three years. So, for the next three years, we will continue to move ahead in improving the initiatives that have already been started this particular year. Thank you. Just one more detail, I will be remiss by not thanking, uh, just, just, the entire team did a wonderful job in representing our district well. They worked very hard under the, uh, the guidance of William Schlala, so I just want, you know, to give them kudos for a job.
Thank you. That was good. I might be able to keep up my Lance Bead record tonight, which I normally do in July. Uh, Claire, is there any further superintendent parts of the superintendent report?
No.
Thank you. Uh, Claire, can we have the Curriculum and Instruction Committee report?
Uh, yes. Uh, curriculum and instruction, can you hear me?
No.
We did not meet tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I will draw your attention on the agenda to, um, there is an English Conversation Cafe that will be happening next year, September, October, November, December. That's item number two. Item number three is a more, a continued for the spring, English conversation program. There are lists of, um, people that will be future teachers coming and doing, um, student teaching and, um, what do they call it, uh, what do they call, um, you know, like a practicum where you come and you watch teachers before you actually student teach. Um, there's a lot of people who are being appointed to write curriculum, which I think is great, and, um, that's all I will call attention to.
Thank you. Any comments?
Can I ask, um, number 11, the approval of professional development presenters?
Yep.
None of those names are familiar to me. Are they, are they staff members, are they outside consultants, are they?
They're all staff members.
Are they all staff members? Okay, so just ones I haven't come across yet. I'm glad they're all staff members, thank you, that's why I was asking.
What is a Staff Development Workshops, Inc.?
Where's that?
Number 11, I'm sorry, it's, uh, the following presenters from Staff Development Workshops, Inc. Is it possible that these are, this, this might be at least some contractors?
Oh, I meant 11, all right, sorry, if I said...
Oh, did you say 11, oh, oh, did you not say 11, I'm sorry.
This is an organization that we have established a very close relationship with. They have provided this district with professional development, and, uh, they did a wonderful job. We acquired, and, uh, most of the teachers wanted some of the presenters back, and so we decided to highlight the best that they had, and, and these are the names of those that have already been working in our district. So, they'll be back next year.
Thank you.
That's what, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, there was a question I had about number, it wasn't 14, I'm sorry, but it also involves, I mean, the same names like 14. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding...
That Margaret Clazo, I forget, Clazo?
Yes, I'm sorry, so number seven, withdrawal of summer curriculum writing appointment, and then they're being reappointed somewhere else, it looks like. Am I reading that wrong?
To write the same thing?
It looks like they're writing other things. So, not social studies or virtual business. So...
So, you're wondering what happened?
Yeah.
Is that your question?
Yes, I was curious about what the change was.
In, I, I believe in Margaret's situation, she was just, um, you know, overwhelmed with a lot of stuff to do, and she couldn't really, uh, continue to, uh, write the social studies curriculum.
Okay.
And, uh, we were able to find another staff member willing to take on the challenge.
Okay.
Edit, oh, sorry. I can't see, I apologize, I don't have my normal glasses with me. Um, on number nine, uh, summer curriculum writing, special education, uh, the last five lines, uh, talk about, uh, curriculum for behavioral disabilities. Am I correct that a behavioral disabilities program, those students will for the most part be receiving the general curriculum? Correct, and this is, uh, what kind of curriculum do they make?
Where are we?
Oh, I'm sorry. Number nine, approval of summer curriculum writing, maybe I'm reading it wrong, uh, we have Ashley Als House and a number of other staff members writing curriculum for behavioral disabilities. What does that mean? Do they, do they not...
Well, basically, they, they are already following the curriculum, they're just, um, they're updating all of the curriculums. That's why there's only 10 hours, not six hours.
Right, no.
It's, it's only to update the curriculum already there.
And modifications for...
Modifications and...
Oh, it's modified, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Uh, Catherine, can we have the Finance and Facilities?
Uh, Finance and Facilities Committee did not meet tonight. Um, uh, one, item number nine, we are tabling, we're striking anyway. And, um, the, we've talked about the air conditioning units for, um, Bartle that came, you know, we were purchasing as a result of the window replacement, that's on items 18 and 19.
Any comments?
I, I had a question about number 11, approval of contractors for professional services, commission for the blind and visually impaired, $1,900 a year. Um, could you explain what that is?
I can explain that. Each year, um, if we have a student who is determined to have a need, um, for those services, they are provided by the state, the commission. There are three different levels of services depending on their level of need, level one, two, and three, obviously. Um, so, once they are identified as having a certain need based upon, um, I guess some kind of evaluation, then they, um, receive services from the Commission for the Blind, and then we have to sign a contract with them, um, to provide those services.
Okay, so the $1,900 would be...
That's probably one student for one, um...
Screen?
Yeah, one year of a specific type of training.
Okay.
For their, you know, their needs.
Thank you.
Quick question about number 12, adoption of resolution to increase bid threshold from $36,000 to $40,000. I know that's a pretty trivial amount, why are we doing that?
Every five years, the, uh, state of New Jersey will, um, review the bid threshold, and the governor will adjust, well, he'll, he'll sign the, uh, order to, um, the legislation to adjust the bid threshold, if deemed necessary. Um, it has gone up every five years, it only goes up once every five years, and, uh, the Board of Ed usually will adopt the same bid threshold that the state has adopted, so that we're just staying in line with the state. Gives us a little bit more flexibility when we go out for competitive purchasing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jer?
Well, yeah, um, well, personnel did not meet, but I just want to make note under, um, number eight, um, for the Schedule B petition, we're going to table the robotics position, and then for number 11, what's that meeting now, Linda, or...
Yep. Just that, you can say it now.
Okay, um, I'm the Board of Education, accepts a recommendation of the superintendent, um, to accept of Donna move, column more effective August 29th, $2,000.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Seeing no comments, uh, Anne, personnel, oh, sorry, the policy?
Policy Committee did not meet tonight, and I do not have a policy report.
I have a brief president's report. Uh, after further consideration and...
Excuse me, point of order? It's not time for the president's report yet?
Oh, sorry, you're right. I go, I go through all the motions, and then I...
I know, it says president's report.
But then we got to go to, we got to go to 11. Yes, the community. Uh, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has, uh, reserved this time for your comments. Anybody who would like to make a comment, please, uh, address, come to the podium and state your name and sign in.
Melissa Newman, 215 Montgomery Street, I just wanted to comment about number 17, about the accident insurance. I noticed that, like, every single year in the summer packet, parents are given a form to buy this accident insurance, but when you read the details of that policy from a parent's perspective, the only thing that would be pretty much covered is walking to and from school, and the probability that someone's going to get hurt, where they would go and need to go to the hospital, or walking to and from school is very small, and if the person has health insurance, then they're not going to need this accident insurance, and if they don't qualify for Medicaid and they don't have health insurance, then their family probably has a lot of financial problems, and this is just wasting their money, and I really don't think we should be sending this to the parents because you're potentially stealing money from parents by convincing them to buy something that they really don't need. I know the school needs it, but the parents don't.
Do you have any thoughts?
Yep, please.
Okay, um, I'll respond to that. There are two different, um, types of insurance. The Board of Education, uh, pays this premium, which is on the agenda, for accidents that occur on district property when, um, during student, um, activities, uh, happening during the school year, school day, excuse me. The, um, insurance that is handed, uh, offered to the parents, uh, is not related to this, it's for other types of student accidents. The, the school district doesn't see this at all. The premium goes directly to the insurance company, it's just, I guess, an option for parents who may need something. Um, I have no opinion as to how valuable this insurance is, it's just something that we pass along. We have really nothing specifically to do with that.
Accidents, accidents are covered by a health insurance policy, so the only person that would potentially need this is someone that doesn't have health insurance, and that's probably a family that needs a lot more help than a, a policy that only covers one type of medical need. And I think you're, you're giving parents a false assurance that they're getting insurance when that's not the case.
So, I think what's best is to, we'll take a look at the flyer that goes home and see if it's appropriate.
Hi, Ellen Leibowitz, 250 Grant Ave., Highland Park. Um, I have a question about, um, curriculum, item eight. Um, under, um, Ms. Fang, it says orchestra, six, eight, and nine, 12. I assume you mean string curriculum and not orchestra?
Six, eight, should say string and orchestra?
Isn't that the same thing?
Isn't that the same?
Isn't that the same thing?
In our curriculum book?
No.
All right, I'll look at...
Thank you.
Orchestra is the ensemble, string is the string program, having to do with lessons and what, uh, students will learn in the lessons.
This is Ellen's area, no one...
I'm sorry?
I said, this is your area, so...
Exactly. Um, and then, I was wondering if there's an update?
Yeah, thank you, I was going to ask, I was going to ask you to do it.
Oh, it's the board. Uh, if there's an update on where we are with the superintendent search, is this...
So, there will be no announcement tonight. Uh, the, an announcement will come, uh, within about 48 hours of a signed contract.
Okay.
With the respective, um, can, the final, with whoever the board decides to make the offer to. So, that process is happening, it should happen right now, if we, it should happen quite quickly, um, but there's no expected timeframe right now.
Okay, and so, um, there won't be announcement then, I assume, until the next board meeting?
No, uh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, um, within 48 hours of that signed contract, I will call a special meeting to appoint that, to appoint that person to start the 60 days, so that person can be in, in district as soon as, as soon as possible.
Okay, great, and I also just want to thank the board and, and, um, commend you really for the, the improvements to the search process. It's really, I think, been much better, and I hope we, uh, have an excellent result. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further, further public comment?
Michael Breanough from South Adelaide Avenue, a couple of things, you brought up the subject of kind of an honor roll, way of honoring graduates of accomplishment in the high school. That's, uh, an idea that's been floating around. There's not that much wall space in the high school that seems suitable. I've looked at this at other high schools across the country and see how they do this kind of thing, but I would suggest if there are a couple of you are interested in that, to look at how it's handled at other schools and do some research. As to the reference to the Alumni Association, I want to labor with all the details of why that doesn't exist and so on, if you want a little historical background, and think another attempt at doing it might work, I'd be happy to supply you with the, the background information. The Education Foundation worked very hard to try to get that underway, uh, about 12 years ago, and it did not happen. I want to echo Ellen's, uh, compliment to you as to the hub, the portion of the search for a superintendent that involved community members' participation, and say, I know it's perhaps tasteless to ask for two bites of an apple, but I did send you guys a kind of echo of my earlier comments that I hope Mr. Sherman will share with you for the next week's decision. Happy for you.
Thank you.
I have a question, my assistant to Grant, um, I just wanted to, um, touch base with you, um, in April, I think, I'm glad they pulled right after, there's so much discussion. I suggested that it might be productive that when we get our letter from the mayor with our property tax bill, that instead of it just having a paragraph saying, you know, email, uh, Mr. Sherman or call the superintendent if you want to know what happened, it would be nice to get some feedback, um, from the school district, the way we get some information from mayor. Unfortunately, that did not happen this past week. Um, for whatever reason, the increase that we saw on our bills for this school tax was less than 2%.
Yep.
I hope that's not a mistake.
It's not.
Okay, I have no idea how that happened. Um, it's great that it happened in the positive direction, well, I guess the negative direction was just the good direction.
There's, you're going to say, yeah, don't, yeah, don't.
And I know it's convoluted because of the not matching up the fiscal years, but what worries me about seeing something like that is, well, maybe one other year it might be 2% higher than we expect with no warning. So, it's just the lack of transparency is frustrating.
Uh, so, in terms of the letter, the mayor, the mayor wrote, the mayor wrote the letter?
Is it, I, I, I would think this would be a trivial thing for you guys to cooperate with mayor on.
I was in conversation with the mayor and the council president up until very, very early, late last week, knowing what was happening. Uh, the letter, the letter was written, um, and the, the point about the, um, property taxes, there is caveat to that, it's not a 2%, it, the property taxes that was originally reported in our budget cycle is accurate, but because of the fiscal year and the way...
Timing of the debt service.
The timing of the debt service, the full, the full, the full number will be coming to you, uh, in a different, different quarter, in next year.
So, we'll get a bigger than expected increase next year?
Yeah.
Yes. The debt service payment is not a level payment, it's higher in the spring than it is in the fall, because that's when we pay the, uh, principal on our mortgage, so to speak. Um, so, the timing with the state on a calendar year basis versus the school district on a fiscal year basis complicates matters, and they, they apparently don't collect in the spring what we need in the spring for our debt service. They calculate, because they wait for the municipality to do their annual calendar budget, it doesn't get put in until they get that, which isn't until March. So, it'll end up in the property tax bills in July of next year, so basically, they're collecting late for what is needed in the spring.
Oh, so, I know there was a refinance for the debt service, is that why it's an issue for this year?
Yes, yeah, that was the thing, two years ago, the, the debt service was more of a, a 40/60 split, so you didn't really see it so much. Now, it's like a 23/77 split. So, the smaller percentages collected in the fall, the higher percentages collected in the spring, and unfortunately, the state doesn't take that into account at the right, at the time that we need it, because they're on a calendar year basis. It is very complicated, and I...
All right, I'll just let my neighbors know to start saving an expected benefit next year.
Yes, yes, unfortunately.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Seeing as there's no public comment, uh, I would like to move, uh, to the board action items. Claire, can we have the curriculum?
Uh, yes. I would like to move items one through 14 of, on the curriculum agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherbert?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
I move items one through eight and 10 through 20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Linda, roll call, please.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherbert?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Versa?[1793.83] Mrs. Versa?
I, I move, um, item one through 14, with the exceptions of the changes I have said.
Do you, do you include the addendum? Second. Include the addendum? And the addendum. I had to hand it to you in executive session. Yeah, there's been...
I left it.
So items one through 15.
Second.
Any comments? Linda, please.
Mrs. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Ms. Mc...
You, oh, okay, all right. Okay, okay, okay.
So is she voting or is she absent?
She'll, she can be absent.
She can be absent.
She's absent?
Yeah, you can vote. She votes yes. My, she votes yes. I'll allow it.
Okay. Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
It's all good.
Yes.
Is it okay with our attorney?
Yes. Yes. Attorney's okay with it, we're good.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, and so there is a brief president's report. Israel and I have been having many just conversations about special ed, uh, over the last, uh, few weeks and months. Um, it is our agreement to, that we should immediately, uh, post the position of Director of Ed Services as we are so far along in the superintendent's search and that we should have a number of candidates for the next superintendent to choose, uh, almost on day one of his, um, to, to, day one of his, uh, arrival in our, in our district. Uh, so with that, I think, um, within the next few days and weeks, we'll, uh, post that on our website and it will be in open position, um, and inform, uh, Mr. Shalala if you have, uh, not already. Thank you. Is there any old business?
I have one old business. I just wanted to, um, publicly acknowledge Dwight and his company for helping us get through the superintendent's search process. I'm happy that people are feeling like it's more open than it's been in the past. Um, it makes me happy, I think it makes all of us happy, so, um, looking forward to us choosing, um, a very good person and, um, thank you, Dwight.
Thank you, Dwight. Is there any other old business?
Yes, uh, one question, I'm sure you're anticipating what I'm going to ask. We've been talking about the changes to the special education program, uh, at Irving and Bartle. Um, you, you know my concerns. My particular, very specific concern is the changes proposed to kindergarten and first grade in which those students with special needs will be receiving services in resource rooms rather than in the classroom, and I'm wondering if, if there has been a final decision about that?
No, in that regarding Irving, there has not been a final decision. I'm going to be meeting with the principal this particular week, so by the next board meeting, um, we should have a final decision. I just want to give her the, but she was on vacation, she got married and all that stuff, so I want to give her that opportunity to really, uh, look at this in, in more detail.
That's great.
Absolutely.
I would, you know, I would urge her to perhaps consider waiting until IEPs have been done for the incoming students because of course we, I'm sure we still have registrants that have not registered.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just want to make, mention that an enormous amount of time and, uh, talent and energy has been expended for this summer's curriculum writing. Um, the staff, they've really been working very hard. I've taken a very close look at the quality of the work and I think, um, the work that they've, uh, produced is going to put our students in, in, in a very good place to, to succeed in the future. Um, not only are, uh, the, the curriculum maps and the units of studies aligned, but they're also succinct and, and scaffolded, so I'm very pleased of, uh, what I'm seeing thus far. So kudos to, to everyone involved in that project.
And I think it's much appreciated, uh, by us, uh, with it being the summer and you on your way out, that you're still dedicated to getting all of our curriculum in line at this time and with the help of the staff, so that's much appreciated from our end. Thank you.
And one quick question, Israel. Last year, obviously, we had a large issue with, in both Bartle and Irving, having the ELL students clustered into classrooms. We haven't really talked about what's happening for this year. I'm presuming that that practice is being discontinued and that those students will be dispersed.
Yes, it is.
Fabulous, thank you for confirming that.
Is there any, uh, old business? New business? I just have one thing. Michael, you didn't get, I want to thank you as well, the HPEF. I think you guys do a great job since you're here, might as well take the opportunity to do it. Uh, and, you know, you guys have given us a number of great programs and you've been in our district for such a long time as well, so thank you for that. Any other new business?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, the calendar. So the calendar is getting changed to accommodate two board member, two board meetings in November. Uh, the reasons for change are...
Parent-teacher conferences?
Parent-teacher conferences and also I think some of the administrators were having an issue with one of the days as well.
Well, I could have found a substitute.
Yeah, but, okay. Um, but so the recommendation after talking to Israel and Susan is to, uh, to adopt these dates for the remainder of the year.
Yeah, the dates?
Yeah, they're in, they were in your calendar.
Oh, they're in?
They're in your drive.
Oh, yeah.
Could I ask a calendar-related question? I think we had an email from somebody at...
There we go.
Yom Kippur blackout dates or days before Yom Kippur. I, I've forgotten the details, but are we on top of that? And are there going to be blackout dates, as she suggested?
So we're looking at what we normally do, I...
So at one point, we actually got rid of blackout dates with the idea that, um, students who are absent for religious holidays are always entitled to make up work. Um, and it seemed, um, it seemed unfair to hamstring teachers, um, because, because if we have blackout dates for the day before Yom Kippur, then, you know, then there are, you know, there are dates for a wide range of religions that, you know, and so you really end up sort of shooting a lot of holes in the calendar. It starts to look very, um, you know, it starts to really be a problem. So I, I think at one point, we actually just got rid of blackout dates and I thought that was wise. Students are always entitled to make up work that they miss for religious observance. They're, you know, it is, it is, it is an absolute excused absence and the work, it can be made up and, you know, and I, uh, I'm reluctant to sort of, you know, we already accommodate our Jewish students in a way that we don't accommodate other religious, um, students. And I'm reluctant to, to take that a step further, so that might...
I would, I mean, with the Jewish religion, there's a particular reason for the day before, obviously, you know, being an important day. And that's, the blackout day is the day that the holiday begins, that night, correct?
Right. The holiday begins the night before, but the day of is not, you know, the eriv is the night before, but the day of eriv is not a holiday.
Well, I just wanted to, I mean, it's, I don't know that this would apply to all religions. It is sort of a special feature of those holidays. You know, for the Christian religions, you know, the day before Christmas is not a big deal. For me.
Right. But maybe, well, maybe the solution is just to make it very clear on the calendar that while we do not have blackout dates, that this is the policy, you know? And I think that's a very good idea. A simple sentence or two to say that whatever religion you practice, please... You're always entitled to, um, to any accommodation that can reasonably be made.
Yep. Absolutely. Good idea. All right. Do we need a motion to adopt the calendar? Linda? Attorney?
You need, you need a motion to change the calendar. Would you?
All right, so change.
Do you have a calendar in the first place? Amending it?
Yep.
Should be motion to amend the calendar as set forth in the document.
He's getting his, he's getting all his money's worth right now. This is what we pay for. Good idea. Uh, kind of a motion to amend the, the current, the board of education, uh, meeting calendar.
I would like to propose an amendment to the current school year calendar for 2015, 2016.
It's not the school year calendar, it's the, it's the board calendar.
The district calendar, or the board meeting, the board meeting calendar.
You could say the previously submitted calendar.
The previously submitted calendar for board meetings.
Yep.
Sort of.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Linda? Rolcall, please.
Mrs. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Can I have the, uh, the public, I believe, is next? Uh, Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and reserve this right, uh, this time for your comments. Is there any further comments, uh, made earlier?
Melissa Newman, 215 Montgomery. I just wanted to comment about the blackout dates. Um, blackout dates consist of two parts. One is testing on that particular day and two is homework. I don't know if it means homework due on that day or homework assigned. When you have a holiday like Yom Kippur, which starts at sunset on the night and goes sunset to the next day, and kids are not eating, they're not drinking, they're spending the whole day sitting in synagogue, they're not going home, they're not watching television. You know, having a test on eriv Yom Kippur during the school day is not an issue whatsoever. But when you start giving homework on that night and then expect them to return to hand the homework in, like say, the holiday's on Monday, on Tuesday, and then expect them to hand it in on Wednesday, that's not possible because they haven't eaten, they haven't drank in, they're spending all day sitting in synagogue, praying to God. It's just not a physically thing. And I think when you do the blackout dates, the way we're doing it now is it's putting the two parts together and maybe in some instances, we need to separate out the two, you know, blacking out the day in terms of what's done during the school day versus blacking out the day versus what's done in terms of giving someone homework.
So, so I think this, I think the solution is what, with, what Darcy and Anne came